So, how's everybody doing?
Good.
This is, to my knowledge, the first time we've ever gotten together and I think it's whatever do. Thank you so much. I'm David Gann. I'm the Chairman of the Bunk County Commission. And we don't really have an agenda. I don't have a secret paper to give you about what we really want to talk about. We want to talk about you. We want to hear how things are going. We want to hear about what's, uh, problems you might have, things we need to talk about. Sales tax was a big thing we wanted to talk about, but I think Senator Apodocas talked to us a little bit and calmed us down a little bit after the bad bills came out and we feel pretty good about that. So, maybe if we go around the room and, and talk about, uh, maybe the biggest thing you think's going on at your district that we, you'd want us to know about because we, uh, we owe you a lot to keep you safe, to keep us secure. And we don't thank you enough. We want to make sure you got what you need to do your jobs and if you don't, we need to know about it and want to see if there are things we need to be doing, if we're not doing, we need to tell us. Ms. Cole, Mr. Steve Presley, y'all, let's start over here if that's, if that's alright. Mayor Beahan, does that seem like a good way to go?
Yeah, put Dennis on the line.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I say one to add to that? Um, I've heard over and over about, um, the lack of volunteers, so I'd love them if we could have an opportunity to find out how you think we could get more volunteers.
Alright, no, that's great.
Well, I'll start off with that. Volunteers is not just a countywide or a state problem, it's a nationwide problem. We go back twenty years or so, twenty-five or even thirty years, there's a waiting list for volunteers for departments. There's, there's no such thing now as, as a waiting list to get in the department. Uh, it's just times have changed like everything else and we have to adapt to the changes and we have to also make sure that the standards are put out there so our firefighters are trained to, to meet today's world. And people that live in the volunteer world just don't have that time to commit to the number of hours that this group, uh, says that we need to do because it's, it's a different world out there than it was thirty years ago. Uh, different, different types of homes that, with all kinds of materials in it that's burning and, and used to. You'd have an OJT, uh, on, on-the-job training then and now you don't do that. You, you have the training before you start, so, so that's changed. Um, there's a, a recruitment and retention program that's going, it's gonna happen sometime in the next week or so at the training center and that's gonna tell us how, how, uh, uh, we can try to do that. But the whole nation in itself is, is having this problem. And, uh, most ever department is going to some kind of form of paid firefighter, at least one, one at each department, some, some, uh, others that are larger, but it's just a difficult time. And that, that brings me to our part in the South Bunk area. We're not growing, we're going, getting smaller out there and we're getting cow pastures everywhere. You know what's happening in, in South Bunk. And that, that, uh, that leaves us, uh, and a good concern because everybody knows that when we, when we grow, we've got to grow with it. Uh, and we've got to grow with the resources that we've got and, and at the same time be responsible for our taxpayers in our district to make sure that we're, we're giving them the quality service at the same time keeping their taxes low. And, uh, I think most of us this year, that's what you're gonna see with, with our budgets, but, but as we look into the, the course of all in the future, we've got to say how many more apartments and, and houses are gonna be built out here, uh, in the next couple of years. And it's amazing now, that, that, David, you know, you, you drive by most of them coming, uh, so, so it's, that's a challenge for all of us. It's not only gonna change, uh, our responses, but it's gonna change, um, the qualification for the department insurance. They're gonna start making you have, uh, more equipment and more manpower and more water to provide for all these, these houses. And what, and everybody in this room knows about department insurance, but, but the single most, single most thing that makes it happen in your district is water and manpower to lower these ratings, which in turn lowers people's homeowners' insurance. And that's, that's, that's what we're after. We're after safety first and then we're after saving folks as much money as we can.
And how's the new substation?
Substation's working out great. We're, we're, uh, as you know, you see that growing down there, uh, it, it's gonna get bigger, we think, in, in the next several years and that's gonna, it's gonna serve that west side of the ramble very nicely down there.
Just that they contracted, I believe, with Billmore Forest to, to do the area out there, built a new beautiful place.
And that helped us with the rest of our district is what, that was a big, we were very concerned about, the, the ramble grow whether or not being protected from, from the main station. And we put a, it's, it's back in the forest enough to where we'd go straight to it. That's gonna help us.
Well, it sounds like we need someone on the planning board, one of your members. Any fad can address that, Chief.
Kinda like what Dennis said, you know, most of us have got that, uh, volunteer issue. I had spoken with, uh, Ms. Frost earlier and there are some things out there in the nation that folks are doing now, whether they're really working on it, I don't know, I haven't been following it. Some of those things are giving tax breaks to those who volunteered their time, uh, you know, when that's something that you could probably do locally, you know, when you start looking at that, you just gotta find out what, uh, what has the biggest impact, what means to most of the folks that are out there today, it's probably, it's probably those dollars. Uh, you know, so there may be something there that, uh, as county commissioners you could take a look at and maybe give some kind of a tax break to those folks who want to volunteer their time. Uh, you know, there's, uh, there's been tax incentives that, uh, the IRS and folks have put out for that and then they take that information, uh, from the department or the department chief as to verify that those individuals are qualified member of the department, so.
Do we have authority to do that? Any kind of, on a local level?
We don't have any authority over any kind of income tax or any authority to change a property tax. What, what kind of incentives are they?
Well, that's some of the things that, that folks have done, uh, throughout the nation is give tax breaks, property taxes, some of those things, uh, some of the, uh, some of the folks give benefits to folks that are living in the county through county-owned things such as, uh, uh, cut rate to play golf or, or things like that. So, some of those things are, I know those are out there. I'm not saying that's the answer, but I know there's things.
We can do benefits, we can talk about. And thank you for your service on the planning board, you're the newest member.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, y'all got your own plan, Chief.
That's, you know, that's, that's about it. We're doing pretty well, you know, like everybody else. We've, uh, we've grown greatly over the past several years. Our, our call responses doubled in the past three years. We've gone from nine hundred to almost eighteen hundred calls, so, uh, you know, and, and I don't mind bragging about our department just a little bit. We're one of the few that, uh, have been able to keep our tax rate low. Uh, I say low, it's been worse than that. We've only had one tax increase in fifty-some odd years. Through that, we've lowered our ISO rating to straight class five. We've put on, uh, put up twenty-eight, uh, paid employees and we've took our ambulance to paramedic levels without raising taxes and without the support of everybody else that's been through those folks there in that community. We're not alone in doing this, there's other folks that have done that, so, uh, when folks say that, uh, the fire departments, uh, aren't doing some of the things that they should, they really need to take a look at all those departments and don't categorize everybody with, with warm. So, I think there's, these folks sitting in, in this room have taken the time to come up here and I think a lot of these folks here have, uh, had to, uh, suffer when those tax funds haven't come in like they should have. And we're expected to produce that product, that service regardless of what that tax money is. And so, uh, and I think these folks in this room have done an outstanding job of that throughout the campaign, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, I personally know a couple of the fire departments that are already, already up to their limit, all the way that they can really benefit much more of this, this community to grow, so if more money basically comes into, you know, uh, so that's, you know, Barnardsville's one, I think they're, they're at their limit and, uh, all the way down the mountain, a little, little fire department, trying to think of, in the district. But we gotta figure out and try to make sure that we keep them up and sort them out, these two, so. Uh, Russell Mill, I know they're growing because the community's growing a lot better and, uh, that helps your tax base and you can, you can break it out a little better, so that's, uh, that makes it where you don't have to go up some. More building, more people, you know, more tax base, so no different than the county. Our tax base comes up too, so, if we can top people into moving. Well, thank you for what y'all do.
Thank you for that.
Well, I, I tend to be talking about volunteers. I've been with Closter Fire Department for about thirty-two years.
Introduce yourself, as, as y'all will, be sure to introduce yourself for everybody.
My name is Ted Godzuski, I'm the District Chief of Closter Volunteer Fire Department. I have been associated with the Fire Department for thirty-two years, thirty years of that as they volunteer. And this has nothing to do with commissioners, but what, as Dennis was saying, we have been together, the training and things that people, the hours that people have to put in. The state, you know, it doesn't matter then whether you volunteer to the age, you will have the same qualifications to be able to dig certain things. And, uh, another thing that I see nowadays is that, and I had a young man and I've known him since he was a bank, and recently joined our Fire Department as a volunteer, and what the Fire Department community found is, is there a possibility of me being able to get hired, even part-time? And that's what, I, I see a lot of young people, that, that's their thought, and that's not the, the volunteer. I can think back when I first joined the Fire Department, you had like three departments in Bunk County, I think, that had paid staff, either in Skyland and Black Mountain or wherever. Now wherever the department in the county, even if it's part-time, they have paid staff. And it's not because it was a neat idea or it was a luxury, it's because of that. And Dennis says, you know, like you give more cow pastures, that's, we still have a long, a long time. To have a fire, uh, to, to do a firefighting, we actually had to go see Chief Radcliffe go in his district before we could even see a firefighting, kind of all of it.
How many hours, what are the qualifications for a volunteer? I mean, how many hours of training?
Well, I would say just to be basic level A M T and double C M L, I think it's two-hundred hours. And then you're, uh, to be a certified firefighter, I've got a two in the state of North Carolina, has recently changed and I, I would be afraid to guess the hours, but it's an abundance. And, and people volunteering, you know, they, if they work a forty-hour job and they've got, they've got other activities, it's, I, I'm actually part-time paid, I'm paid for a couple days a week. And what I do, I retired a couple years ago and that's made me available to be able to walk the fire. I retired from my, my job that I've been at in thirty-six years. Uh, you asked some of the things, Renee, I, I don't know what he meant by, I meant to, was that, and one of our fifth captains today, I said, I'm gonna go up to a meeting.
That shift?
Shift.
Okay, I'll make sure. I thought that might be it.
And I said, anything, anything you want me to say to him? And he said, tell him to send money, tell him what he's doing. So, I, I, I have that message to you. Uh, I've seen, you know, been in front of some of y'all before, when I was five, just about remember one of us, three or something. But any, any help, I know the sales tax, I don't get any help you can give us financially.
I'll say this, on a general, simply, whatever they do, I don't think they're gonna hurt us. And if they did, we're not gonna hurt you, we're not, we're not gonna stick at y'all. I don't think the majority of the world would ever dream of that, but we're gonna make sure you, you stay where you are. We can't control what they do to us because they, they can pull us any way they want to, but I don't think there's any desire on this board, and I hadn't voted on it because we hadn't come up, but I don't think anybody's gonna, if y'all would show it, you know, if, if we have to make decisions about how to allocate tax money.
And I'm, I'm gonna stick my neck out, I know that y'all are voted by districts. We said to the chairman that, uh, you know, we, we welcome other district people out. We dedicated our substation a couple years ago. I told y'all, I said, tell them, tell them to come back and tell your people we, we welcome them as well as we're close.
Y'all, y'all provide stuff, provide all of us, because I think we all make an effort, you know, that's important. You represent us all.
I think that was the weekend of, I think, part of y'all, I think, were in Europe, so, you know, Europe, those two places.
So, you mentioned needing money and it may, it probably varies by department, but in your opinion, if you had money, would, do you, and we've talked a lot about volunteers and manpower, do you need money for additional manpower or do you need money for additional equipment primarily? Like where would you put them?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I know you do, but, but is your greatest need manpower, is your greatest need equipment or can you, you really can't pick?
Well, I, I can tell you what some of our goals are. We have the main station that's manned with three people twenty-four seven. And two substations, one in Sandy West Bend and one in the new town. There are, those two stations are staffed with two people twelve hours a day. One of our goals, one of our dreams is to get two people in those stations twenty-four seven. We are, we've outlived our present main station. If it's a good station, if it's an adequate station, when it was built back in nineteen-seventy eight, we have acquired property beside the Lester Library out there, there a few years ago. And that's one of our hopes and dreams that, you know, that you, you go with what you have and did this with what you have and hope for the future and try to work for it. We, we would have, we have need for more personnel, to be able to hire more personnel. And, uh, you know, it does bring revenue, but it's, a cow pasture doesn't bring in as much revenue as a, as a Walmart or something else.
I think too, one of the, one of the blessings out in the family gate that property.
Well, we bought it.
You did buy it from them?
Yes, we, we got it at a pretty good, you know.
Yeah, I know, there was, so, and, and my point to that, is once needs are put out there, then, you know, sometimes there's opportunities for people in the community to meet those needs, it's, you know, there's a lot of different ways. I think it's important to, you know, Commissioner Gold's question is just to know, you know, what the needs are and make sure it communicated, not only through us, but in, you know, within the community and allow us to be able to do that too, when we're networking out in the community too.
And, and we, if you go further on that, we, uh, would like to go with the paramedic one, with our analysts. Lester, I don't know, a lot of people don't realize, not population-wise, it's square mile wise, Lester has the largest fire district in the county. We actually contracted a small portion of Madison. We, we have about seventy-six, just over seventy-six square mile, I think, and about thirteen, fourteen, in the edge of Madison.
My name's Jeff Alm, I'm the Jupiter Fire Department. Uh, we're a smaller department, we have about nine full-time guys and six part-time personnel. We're manned twenty-four hours a day, uh, have a single station. Uh, we bought, purchased land a couple years ago and are paying it off for a substation to help lower our insurance rating. We were just being nine, two years ago, we lowered it to a six. And with this, uh, property, that'll give us, another station will give us close enough to where we can have a six for the whole district. So, other than that, we're basically all residential with a few, uh, gas stations and small business stuff.
Where's the substation gonna be?
It's gonna be at twenty-five seventy Jupiter Road.
It's, it's a fairly new station too.
Well, the station that we're in right now is, uh, twenty-two years old, but it still looks like new, but.
Very well taken care of, that's all I can say.
Maintain, maintain good, but, uh, the substation will, right now, with part of our area, what the stations said, we don't have, but, uh, that's reason it's split district with the nine and six, so. Other than that, it's, uh, we're doing pretty well.
Can I ask y'all a process question? So, when those ratings drop, which is a happy day for y'all, I mean, is that just automatically reflected in people's, I mean, are there like databases that do that, or people have to ask for it?
They have to ask for it because a lot of the insurance companies, if you don't ask them for it, or know what it is, they're gonna keep charging it.
Yeah, so, would it be helpful, um, to, maybe there's, maybe there's a way that we can help get the, when those moments happen, that we can use some of our, uh, PR people to kind of blast it out there?
We tried to do some of that, we done some mailings and then had community meetings to let everybody know that we were, that the insurance rating had dropped, so that was no problem.
Sure, sure, maybe we could just, you know, do, help the good things they're already doing too, so, yeah. And then also to help people feel good about, uh, their tax.
Jeff Angel, Fire Chief, Winton Fire Department. Uh, we're a smaller department too, we run with, uh, two guys a shift or six, had some part-timers. One of our goals is to try to go, uh, with three, um, on shift, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. Uh, we have increased, two years ago, we were running about eight-hundred calls, last year, we ran close to fourteen-hundred calls. Uh, we have slowly getting out of, uh, the housing crashes and some of the things that we had there that were, were hopefully would grow, that didn't. And, uh, right now, we're doing pretty good, we just get some of that stuff done.
And Mayor give you trouble?
No, I don't ever say that.
I'm Jeff Justice, Fire Chief, for Renssberg Fire Department, I also operate Beaver Down Fire Station. Uh, we ran about two thousand calls last year, we also, both districts are six, and in the new budget starting in July, we're going to the paramedic level with our ambulance, that is something that's in the process now. Uh, volunteer-wise, we've got a pretty good volunteer base, but it's a rotating door. By the time you get them equipped, insurance on, get them to the training center and get them trained, they decided, you know, that takes more time than I thought, so they're out for next year, so you recruit new volunteers. But we do actively recruit volunteers all the time. Uh, as far as your money, I think we showed, when Black Mountain got on fire, and I personally didn't go out there, but many people in this room did, if that would've been in another county, it'd been catastrophic.
Yeah.
I mean, Bunk County is blessed with trained firefighters and fire equipment and that's why Ridge Crest Community's still standing. Higginson City sent multiple trucks, all the county departments sent multiple trucks and had it not been for that, had it been Madison or Haywood or, you know, not down those, but they just don't have the manpower and stuff that we had, that would've been a catastrophic fire that we've been talking about for many years.
Well, and y'all get along, I've been to some of your luncheons, I know, you cut off each other, so, that's, that's great, y'all take time to do that.
Yeah, so, that's all I can tell you about Renssberg, we're pretty busy for a small apartment, a little room as well, we don't really have any industry, but we try to stay on top of stuff. One thing I would like to add, though, right now, I operate Beaver Down Fire Department as a Beaver Down Fire Department. It's still got an FDID number and at some point now that we've learned we've got, uh, service districts in our own, I'd like to make that contract not with Beaver Down Fire Department, but move it over to Renssberg Fire Department. That would save our taxpayers and their taxpayers money as far as, we duplicate services now for audits.
Oh, right, yeah.
You know, we're gonna save some money there and at some point, I'd like to just do that. We did do it because of the tax district for four, but now it's service district, so it would be a cost savings to both places, we could work on that.
All right, Mayor, it's to you. Okay, well, I'm just gonna pose a little, fair, a little. Really, I'll add one thing, it, you know, I appreciate y'all, the board, listening to all the guys today, you know, they've got a, got a harder job to do and they do it very well.
Scott Jones, Fairby Fire Department. We pretty much have, we experience the same issues like, like you've already heard with volunteers. I think, uh, Chief Justice there kind of spelled it out to the best, it's a revolving door, you get, we get people constantly coming in, want to volunteer, and then when they realize what, what they have to do, it's, I'm out of here, I, I can't do that, I can't do that, provide a living for my family and have a job and kind of play at the Fire Department too. But, uh, we, uh, pretty much over the years, we've been trying, past few years, just to try to keep our, um, insurance classification, uh, as best as we can. We're, we're right now at a class six. Uh, at, uh, the state of North Carolina, that's the best you can have right now for residential purposes, commercial properties, uh, reap the benefits, you know, below a six, but, uh, we've, uh, getting that class six, we actually called some of the insurance companies to go and start, uh, looking at their properties they insure based upon mileage, so anything that's five miles and over away from the fire station, they're putting those back in a class nine, class ten, whatever district they, or, or insurance classification they wanna put them in. Uh, one that really hit us hard, the hardest was, uh, or kind of brought it to our attention was a large, uh, insurance company, uh, they're, they're nationwide. I literally thought it was a mob hit, this guy in a black trench coat come in there asking me personally, and I, I almost didn't want to talk to him, but, uh, he, he told me who he was and he was with this insurance company and he said, we've got a problem. He said, uh, I'm southern in your district, he said, uh, my insurance company insures over thirty properties and he said, due to the mileage, he said, on average, we're increasing their insurance premiums a thousand dollars a year, on an average. Uh, that's just one insurance company, so you know how many insurance companies are out there. So, that whole south side of our district was getting hit anywhere from five hundred, we seen all the way up to, uh, twenty-five hundred dollar increases in homeowners' insurance premiums because they were like five, a tenth of a mile past that, that five mile limit, I mean, they were hammered. Uh, the only thing to, to correct that was our substation and we have, uh, we, we bought some property back in two thousand and eight and, uh, just, everybody knows what happened after two thousand and eight and everything, economy crashed, we just wasn't able to build a station. Uh, last year, we, we ran across a, a deal that, uh, a local contractor had basically vacated a property there in that same general vicinity, already had a building on it and, uh, we was able to purchase that at a really good deal and within probably another week to two weeks, that building's gonna be complete as far as, uh, you know, adding living quarters and, and making it into a fire station. So, as soon as that's complete, those property owners that got hammered by that thousand dollars and up insurance premiums, if we get that thing in service, they'll be able to get, you know, a reduced rate. So, they're calling on a weekly basis, so Chief Presley called me the other day, I think he got chewed out because one of our residents thought that, he lived in Skyland's district and his insurance premiums went through the roof, so, uh, he called me and I ended up having to call and talk to the man and, and he was extremely upset, but when I explained to him that this substation's within a month of, of coming online, completely changed his attitude, so, uh, that's pretty much our goal right now, is get that substation up and going, which we can't see the, a light at the end of the tunnel right now.
And where's that gonna be kicked?
Uh, it's one thirty-three up the Rush Creek Road, uh, it's, uh, you turn down beside the Kane Creek Pool and go around behind, kind of behind, uh, Kane Creek Middle School, it's back there on the left.
My name's Kevin Monday, I'm the Chief out at Barnardsville Fire Station, uh, from the deep north end, and first of all, I want to thank you, the Board of Directors and Commissioners and Dr. Green back there for your support, that you certainly give us the focus in Barnardville a few years, not only us, but everybody in this room. And, uh, we are that department that Mr. Pryor was talking about, there is, we are the one, it's fifteen cents, certainly not anything that we're proud And we are that department that Mr. Pryor was talking about, areas we are, the one, it's fifteen cents. Certainly not anything that we're proud of, but when we had to ask for that, back three or four years ago, y'all were so gracious at that time, to allow us to do that. Now, that was probably the first county that ever had to go to that point, and, you know, that's to try to get us to do anything different, and we thank you for that. We had several years, and even this year, we still have, at fifteen cents, we still are high money-wise as far as having money to put in reserve for vehicles. Thankfully, thanks to Pat Lewis back about three years ago, he found an issue, a way that we could actually start doing what we call insurance billing for the ambulance service that we, we run. And the money that we get out of the ambulance billing, we actually are having to use it to purchase vehicles and stuff with, which is actually outside of the tax, you know, the fire tax that we give. But thankfully, it's there to use. If not, we still have zero in, in that one line, but, but we are, we are surviving. And thankfully, I think they said that now we're considered service districts, if we do ever have to, just to go up some, we believe, you know, we've got that option to do that. We did lower our ISO back in, same time Jeff did, about two years ago, to a Class Six. Actually, we're six, nine split. But when we did that, we was able actually to give some of the folks in our community to buy some of the money, join the college, what is that, having to pay out the fifteen cent on the property tax, and most everybody was gracious for that. And then now we hear that insurance companies are wanting to go back up on homeowners' insurance again to offset what we've done done. So it's almost a viewpoint, it sounds like, but anyway, we just have to deal with things as they come along. But it appears that we've got some good, I won't say good, but there is some exciting things going on out in there. I keep looking, new houses going up, there's several of them going in. I see new monitors being put in regularly, mobile homes and different things, and when you see that, that, how Jeff Justice does when he gets out with a call, he goes ching, ching. I say ching, ching when I say a house going. There'll be a little bit of help since at this point, but thank you. We, we have about a thirty-member roster, and we have seven full-time employees, and then we've got twenty-three volunteers, including five junior, junior members. But we're like everybody else, it's a, it's a rotating door on volunteers, with the exception of what I call the faithful ten, that we've got a nucleus of ten. And I'm sure every department in here probably got a nucleus of ten that, that'll be there for anything, and we're gracious to have. We've got volunteers that's been there forty-five, forty-six years, write them down, but the ones that Jeff was talking back down then, he got only three months, but that's just the nature of the business, but thank you all for what you do.
Well, thank you. Chief, and this is to all of you, but you just made me think of this. With the junior program, do, the people that do the junior program, they kind of see what it's like, I guess. Are they more likely to be, want to become full-time and stick with it, or is there any benefit of maybe helping that out a little bit to get you more people that understand what it takes to do it? And then maybe have more volunteers, or is that kind of a small, hard puzzle?
In our case, historically, yes. A lot of our, in fact, I was a junior firefighter. I mean, there's been a lot of junior firefighters that end up, end up making a career out of it down the road. And even some of the ones on our roster now are wanting to do it as a career, so yes.
How is that funded, or are they, I mean, how does, is there any funding to that? They just kind of hang around, or they?
Yeah, they just, kind of, it's like, we've got some folks, it's kind of like, over on college, over the junior firefighter, and they have their own meetings, and they do their own training and different things certain times of the month. But of course, they can still be with us at our regular meetings as well, but as far as monies, it's just part of the regular budget.
Didn't we do something with some group, we paid for their school or something? Mayor, at one point, there was a shortage of some emergency services.
I had a call with AM Ash people at one time. How about Owen High School? I know they put a trial program in the high schools. Did that help the high school? Didn't they have a program out there at Owen High School?
Yeah, I think Anthony still got that going.
Is that helped?
I haven't seen a lot from it. Of course, we have a junior fireman program, and a lot of those come through, like Chief Monday said, you know, with, those are our cadence.
High school was helping, I didn't, I know they're gonna try that out there.
So Chief, I started with the training part. So how much ongoing training do you all, does everybody have to get? And then where, where is that, where do you have to go for that?
For the, for the, and you were saying earlier about the initial training, you're looking at about four hundred and sixty hours for the initial training, for ongoing training to meet the ISO. If you're meeting the full ISO requirements, you're looking at about two hundred and eighty hours a year to meet the full ISO requirements to get full credit.
Right.
And so obviously, everybody strives to achieve the two hundred and eighty hours a year, but with volunteers, it's extremely difficult to maintain that. So whenever everybody's working to reduce their ISO rating, then obviously, that's an obstacle that you have, that you have to make up for in other places. Whenever you don't have people that are meeting those training requirements, and it reduces your credit there, then you've got to make up for the credit elsewhere.
So where's the training place?
In the departments, at the new training center. A lot of it takes place at the new training center, especially the initial training, a lot of that's there. And then each department has training on a weekly, daily basis.
So the more convenient the location, with that many, needing that many hours, the better it is.
And it just depends on if it's hands-on training, or more than that, it's gonna be something, it's gonna be doing at the training centers, if it's classroom training, then most of the time, you're looking at the station or the basic, the stuff.
Has that been helpful to the new training centers? That been a good thing for you?
Absolutely. That's like, the fire service happened a long time.
Okay. Are you getting the time in there you need?
And all other thing I would add, or not add, but maybe back to what Chief Lewis was saying earlier, if there's some kind of incentive maybe down the road that you can look at to, for volunteers, to give them something for what they're doing, I don't know how to do that, but there's loads and loads of things there that you can get one paces away. I mean, families get a lot of this and that, while they're alive, they're just very, very little of that there. And I don't know what's at the cost, but in Barnardville, we don't have water, nothing like that. We can get their water, but we don't have water that we can get, meaning it's powder or anything like that. But free trash pickup or something, you know, I'm just gonna.
We don't have one of them either.
So we were going, they get their water, okay.
No, 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 I said they get our water.
Oh, oh, okay.
That was an issue back before yours.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, no.
Now, we need to work on that. You know, sometimes we give volunteers Southern Conference basketball tickets, sometimes they're staying. There's probably some things you might be able to do.
I like I did lots of things there when you're there, but that didn't hold good for anybody.
We want to help you, we want you to look. And nobody minds paying that fifteen cent when their house is on fire and you're putting it out on there, so thank you.
I'm trying to rub through, but you hear these folks talking about the ISO rating, maybe it's six. I don't know if y'all know what's involved in that, too, but talking about training is one part of it. Equipment, response, is how much water you can bring to the fire, how much water you can get to the fire. It's a whole different plan. When we went through about two years ago, the inspector from Front End Insurance, Jack, he had three days sitting there going over things. And he may go in and say, "I want to see your training records," and he may pull David Kent, and David Kent don't have the required number of hours. That's, you know, it goes against you. So it's, it's a, it's an ongoing thing. Like I say, it's just not, oh, well, we've got twenty or thirty people on the roster, and, you know, that's good. That's just one piece of the puzzle. How many people you have, how much training they have, how much equipment you have, what you can respond with, your response times, your miles, everything else.
And the communication center, the new radio system, and that's something that's, that's drastically helped out with their, with everybody's ISO rating system is, the improvements that's been made with the radio system and the redundancy that's, that's occurring there.
Good, good. And you mean by the nine-one-one center?
Yeah, we're, we're ready from the time that somebody places the call until we arrive on the scene for fires. But for medical calls and all the other things that we do, then that's not counted towards it sometimes, even against it, because you're tied up on those whenever you're looking at for the ISO rating. There's other areas that look at that, but that's one, one of the ones that affects you.
That's a serendipity system you're talking about?
It's a city.
What's it, how?
A city.
Yeah, it's easy for you to say. But I, I see the demonstration that is pretty amazing. That's good y'all get in the same room. That's just a native place out there. Everybody's in big auditorium, working together. That's impressive.
My name's Randy Brackler. I'm Fire Chief at West Munkland Fire Department, we're northwest corner of the county. Everything that they've talked about so far, ditto for us. I run a staff of fourteen full-time people. I have fifteen part-time slots, have four vacancies in those part-time slots right now. And I've struggled to keep, on a good day, twelve to fourteen volunteers. We may get twenty applications a year for volunteers, and we may only have two or three that actually will dedicate themselves after the interview process. They come in and they ask questions of, of the interview panel to take in, basically to get through knowledge that they need, be in the ground running. And most of the, you know, we have a good number of times and all that, but they just don't have the time commitments. It's not like myself, Dennis, Ted, I can remember everybody around this room, but whenever we first joined the fire department, it was what, not what you got out of it, it was what you were giving back to your community. And it's, it's not that way now. It's what we call at the fire station, the me generation, what's in it for me. If there's nothing in it for me, then I'm going somewhere else. But it's, it's a struggle, and it's a real struggle, because we answer, we're rejecting about twenty-eight hundred, twenty-nine hundred calls this year. We are an ISO Class Five. Our population skirts about seventeen thousand in the district now. Joe was out there the other night, and he see a lot of, a lot of things happening, I like kept, and every time I see a, not necessarily a new residential structure go up, even though I like very good residential structures, but every time I see a commercial structure go up, I do a, that's a ching, ching to make. Because especially if it's a retail space, that means it's jobs, that's income, that's, that's sales tax, that's, uh, abhorrent tax, so that's a win-win for everybody. It's about me and Joe talked Sunday night, you know. We've got sewer out so far on Lester Highway. Once you get piped, keep it on Lester Highway, there's no sewer. Water extends just a little bit further past that, to Beef Farm Road, and that's it. So that's basically our corridor, trying to get a business in. We, we're desperately struggling to, I've been in negotiations for eighteen months on a piece of property for a substation, which is not going anywhere now. The guy that we're dealing with, he, he has a price. We've worked with Wanda and Michael Prue both, trying to take and see what we can go at on price, and we've, we've offered him as much as we can offer. And he's still not budgein' off of the price. So basically, we have just pushed that aside. We desperately need a station in that area to cover the population in that area. A new thing that, that had kind of arrived the other day, Mayor Behan can attest to this, but there's a small, well, I'd say small, a three hundred acre tract that they're getting ready to hopefully develop within the next few years into a, Jerry, what is that, sort of a small, sustainable community concept?
Yeah.
Over in the town of Woodford, but it's on our side of the river, in our protection district, so I've talked to two of the three developers, and maybe trying to acquire a piece of property to get ahead of them, yeah. One of the things we and Joe talked about Friday night, that back in ninety-six, you know, we started designing the fire station that we're in now, we've been in for fifteen years now. And I'm finally having to put a roof on it, but we've got enough money saved up for it. But the, we were behind the community. The community was outpacing us dramatically as far as growth wise. We caught up with them, and now my point is, my, my goal is to try to stay ahead of the community. And seeing these little things like that, subdivision, or other growth areas coming, to try to go ahead and plan and acquire the property, go ahead and start trying to get the funding together for that substation. Several folks and all there in here, Skyland used to have a ladder truck, but they're probably on the bridge and having to take it. Visit that again in the next few years, depending on growth. We've got several small apartment complexes coming up. We're gonna have to visit that. Right now, we rely on the city of Ischel ladder truck. If we have to have a ladder. I think we run a lot of automatic aid with the city of Ischel, on the Lester Highway corridor, over in the Emma area, and we work with them hand in hand every day, sometimes multiple times a day. They come to us multiple times a day, along with everybody else in this room. So it, it's, it's a real struggle when it comes to trying to make it all balance. Luckily, with the things that Jerry and Michael, and I think one of, I found here recently, now, we've been, we were mandated at ten cents. From a vote from nineteen sixty-two. Well, nobody knew in nineteen sixty-two what the cost of a, cost of a fire truck or a fire station was gonna be here in two thousand and fifteen. So, you know, we do have that flexibility ahead of us, on whether we can, you know, justify it to youngs when it comes time to do that, I don't know. We don't know what the, what the environment is, but, you know, that, we've got a lot of things that we need to do to prepare ourselves for the community that is getting ready to explode in our face to an extent. We still have a lot of raw farm land. I've got a cousin that runs a thousand acres out there. If he ever decides to do anything with that, it's gonna be candy bar the door. But I do really appreciate the time to sit and talk to you, almost all of you, and make sense here and there. But it's, it's a real privilege to sit here and, and talk in this form. It's been a long time coming.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
If we go down the line here, I'd like to know where each department is, you know, you just wrote up here, ten cents. I'd like to know what each department's kinda at in some of that. Can you read that damn word?
If they talk slow enough, I can. We can get you that list if you'd like. Thank you all.
That's, you know, and how much room you've got left is what I'm kind of looking at. You know, you have room, which your neighbor out there, he don't have any left.
As far as, as far as?
Well, you're on ten cents, and he's on.
We're on ten cents?
I thought that's what you said.
Yeah. Right now, we're on ten cents, and I've been trying to take and get, get a definite answer out of, out of county staff of whether we can go past that ten cent mark. Because in sixty-two, our taxpayers said you can't go past that ten cent mark. So they found some stuff. I'm leery of it, because I don't have anything, I have my board of directors, because we had a board meeting last Tuesday night, and they said, "Well, where's the documentation?" And I showed them that, and, well, they want more definite documentation, that, that if we can go past that ten cent mark, they, they can have that. Jerry's been, been working on that, trying to get that to Michael, to, to a lot of us that, that are infringing on that top dollar mark.
Looking to dinner?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll, in recruitment, how much of an issue is housing, money and hiring people, can they find housing for what they're paying? Is that a problem?
It is. You know, I've got, I've got one, two, out of my full-time staff, myself, one captain, one firefighter live inside the district. Everybody either lives outside the district or outside.
Everybody either lives outside the district or outside the county, I've got one who lives outside the state.
Did he start, did he, was he hired as a resident and then moved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
I think what you might be asking is that can, can somebody buy a house on firefighter salary? Uh, and most firefighters that I've ever known, and I've had three jobs since I was eighteen years old, and it takes three jobs for a firefighter.
It was kind of a rhetorical.
Still got all of them.
So, so it's tough on a firefighter salary. So it's, to find housing, it's very tough for, for it's a service.
As I know, some of my part-time staff works full-time for Skyland. And I've got one full-time and one part-time for West.
Do most of your, most of all of your guys, um, and girls work second jobs?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I felt, another rhetorical.
I, I can remember years ago, I had an uncle that worked across street from City Fire Department. I think he worked three days, twenty-four, and then he painted four, three more days. He had his outside job, paint, so it seems like they all seem to have a second job somewhere to, to try it out sometimes, some of the times. But that's, I don't know if it's still that way today, but.
Yes, Howard Beenhong from Channel Fire Rescue. Um, first of all, I wanna thank you for allowing us as a group to meet with you. This is very generous of you, Mr. Todd. And exactly, I wanna thank everybody else in this room for helping me out, I'm a new kid on the block, so.
Thank you.
And also want to applaud you that coming from outside of the area, um, as far as mutual and auto aid, this is the best that I've ever seen in my career. And I thank you for that and I appreciate you coming to help us. Um, with that said, since I've been at ECA, we've, we're focused on several things, uh, to include firefighter safety and community support and services provided by the community. Um, like everybody else, we're having issues with volunteers, recruitment, retention, and like probably most everybody here, I'll be in touch on Saturday, Monday, second, trying to figure out what we can do better, if there's anything. Other things that we're concentrating on, there is some growth going on in any kind of area. Some large facilities that we have some concerns about as far as the equipment we have on hand. So some point in the future, there's probably gonna be an issue for us is to, uh, address those equipment needs for those, uh, large structures. Other areas that we have some concerns in, we've got, uh, uh, several areas that are difficult terrain to get to, that's being built upon as far as grades and things like that. And the expectation is in the middle of winter time when the snow's on the ground, that you call a fire pump, you're still gonna get a fire truck. There's places where I don't, where we're not gonna be able to get to. We're gonna have to figure out how to fix that. Other things that we're looking at, as well as some of the, you've already heard, uh, we are having some growth in, in our area, mostly on the south end right at the moment of, uh, the ECA area. And we have an area that's on the south end that, uh, in further than, than the five mile range, which puts it in a, a ISO class nine area. We're a five slash nine. So we have some concerns trying to provide, uh.
Where, where does that end, Chief? Where does that end?
Stradlin Mountain area is the, is, is the furthest point. That said, we've had several issues with insurance companies calling us regarding the insurance rates for people in that area. And we have a, auto aid with city of Ashville, it's a, got a station off, a mile and a half away, but they're not, the residents aren't getting credit for it. Um, because it's not, you know, it's not from us. So we're looking at those challenges as well as personnel issues and, and, you know, those kind of things. Kind of been focused since I've been there. Also, um, we have, uh, we operate two stations right now, a main and a substation. The main is landlocked, um, so there's no potential for growth there. We do have, uh, land for a third station, which would also be a substation, um, up in the, uh, Polk Creek area. But with the growth that we're seeing in the Chandler and, uh, on the south end and potentially going west, um, we're, we're going to reevaluate that and see if that's the best place for our next station. Uh, so that we don't need the, the ones where we're, uh, previously planned, so there, there is a high haul volume there. But, um, based on the growth that we're seeing, or potential growth that we're seeing with, with the possibility of getting an extra interstate exit there, that we're, we're reevaluating that. And, um, I'm gonna have to apologize, as I said, I'm a new kid on the block, I might have to refer some of that to Chief Howard, who's been with ECA for several years. Josh, if you have anything you wanna add?
Uh, just to, to go along with what Chief Beddick said, this group, uh, I kinda moved into this group in about two thousand and eight. And I remember a day when, uh, you wouldn't see a city fire engine sitting at a county fire station eating, eating a meal together. And, and that happens all the time, I'm sure it happens at other fire stations as well. It's just amazing what this, uh, group of leaders has been able to accomplish in a short period of time. And not only things like that, but cost-saving opportunities, like the radio of, of Grant, uh, Chief Cole was talking about. We now have in place, uh, and it, and it happens with the push of a button, uh, this, this group has, um, uh, been behind an effort to make sure that we have rapid intervention teams, which is for firefighter safety, that respond to every, um, you know, every structural fire in the county. And we, we brought, some of you may have heard of the, the FIS team, the investigation team. We've brought that back to life. That's taken a huge, there's just so many things that are going on in the county, so many, and I'm including the city, I, I shouldn't say, I should say give the fire service in our area, because this, the city of Ashville has been phenomenal. Just like Chief Franklin said, we rely on them every day. And, you know, our residents don't even ask anymore why there's a white scalding fire truck in, in their front yard or a, a red city of Ashville fire truck anymore. This happens all the time, we work together all the time, every day.
Music to our ears, we love hearing that.
That's great. Tell them. Now, I meant to say something about, uh, Jeff Justice when, when y'all went by and to that, to that fall, when we had the gas fire out in ECA Chandler, that would look like something had just, you know, people thought, thought something, oh, Sky exploded and just an incredible fire. Zero, and Jeff kept, Jeff, there was zero injuries in fighting that fire among multiple teams, but, uh, kudos to Jeff and people were calling me and asking questions as they would out in your neighborhood and he would, he continually kept, kept me updated and that type of relationship is, is just something that not everybody has that, to what y'all, what you were saying, not everybody has that cooperation level.
And it's really saved a bunch of money, like, how we were able to send us equipment every day that we don't have to buy. We're not, we use it all the time, we know, we call them, you know. Not many years ago, that wouldn't happen, you had to have your own stuff, so. So it's really, everybody working together has been a wonderful cost savings.
So it's crazy lunch in January.
So the press needs to take note of this model of cooperating.
The, there is flip side of that, though, there's a little wear and tear on, you know, if we're, we're traveling to our neighboring department, that's, that's for miles, five years or ten years ago, not, not really been put on there, at least after accident. And I'm saying that that's, uh, the bad part about it, it is good that we're having the, the commonality of everybody working together, it's great, but it is gonna start, you know, it's just kind of, I'm sure it's gotten to a point where it's a little more like it would have in the past.
I'm sitting up on, uh, I used to say, years ago, there was the haves and the have-nots about, you know, somehow, twelve years ago, I got to be a chief and I started digging in China. And I think it was in oh-seven, we started the Buckland County Firefighters Association Division.
Firebrand Chief.
Firebrand Chief, yeah, firefighter association. And, uh, to watch it all pull together like it has, you just, unless you're there and know it happened, I'm seeing, uh, but an example was, well, in the day in Delaware, when I had a big fire at Black Mountain, uh, for three days, I, I rode with my man, firing stuff out of up on the other side of Black Mountain. And, uh, so did everyone, often I think it, me here, was representing that fire with some, I mean, uh, in the same token, last year, we had a forty-some acre fire, and I think we had nine different departments representing that. So, you know, what you give comes back. And the, uh, we, uh, we're strictly a residential fire district, uh, far as commercial stuff, we have a, a well in shop and one little community store that generates all the bad gossip. You know, they done what we done before we do. We, five, well, it's more than that, we moved in the building five years ago. It was four and a half year project to build our fire station. Uh, one major reason was that the old station was built from all volunteer station. It didn't have buck, rims, showers, office spaces, and all that stuff you had, have now they run a fire department. We moved in there five years ago. So building wise, we're, we're in pretty good shape. Equipment wise, I've got trucks that, you know, eighty-five models, ninety models, we need to be looking, replacing some of that stuff. So far, we've been able to keep it going. That's a big need. But my first needs are the minimal pay personally. Uh, right now, I currently have one meeting each twenty-four hour shift, uh, at three full timers. And making more than six a night, in fact, then with two part-time, work ten hours a shift. So if I was swap on here to have, have to leave the van, they can go work somewhere. And we do have all, all the head up sometimes. When we're set up, we're allowed to carry five people fine on our roster. And, uh, right now, I don't think I'll have another, uh, three of them work, uh, in the city of Ashville. Two of them have made good ten, started out with us as new firm. Uh, I've got some to work with pleasure, uh, different places. St. Hope and I hire folks, Randy and a bunch of other folks to work part-time positions. So, um, but my big concern is six in the evening, eight the next morning. One thing it does for us is just firepower, they're rolling their fire out for us. If it's a medical call, they're gonna take the tax for it. But a lot of times there, I'm on scene a good while before I'm here and get out of here, home, and make it to the scene and be there with. And it's not safe to send one fireman out on anything anybody says. And, uh, I've got the corps you were talking about, ten, I had, I think I counted last night, it was thirteen, it would be, that's there for training. So, uh, I have four good volunteers. Currently, I have three members that are going through the beefy program, they've been trained themselves. Two of them started out as new firm. And, uh, but, uh, I guess one of my real concerns, you addressed it earlier on, was uh, the sales staff. I lose that, that's about half my payroll. And, uh, you know, I'd be back to all volunteer, or, or I wouldn't have enough to keep insurance paid at the doors of. So, uh, it's a little different. We have some unique things up on, uh, I know a lot of stations have it, uh, like, Blue Beach Parkway runs through them, or they got US Forests there. There's a large area of land and about twelve mile Parkway, we respond to. And, uh, I don't think I'd be exaggerating saying that over ninety-five percent of the calls we go to up there are out of state. They don't pay any taxes, go Carolina anyway, in federal government. We have, uh, those two, uh, two businesses, few small businesses front out of homes like River and stuff like that, but, uh, we don't have a little industry up there. And, uh, along with, we have the second largest commercial building, fire station in the district. His government's screwed with this business. So, uh, but we respond to those, all on total line in and stuff like that, we do give compensation for. But, uh, you know, gotta find a station to drive it on, personal vehicle, twenty minutes to get to the Parkway, it'd help cut somebody out of rent.
So you don't get any reimbursement for that?
No.
When you go up on a Parkway and?
It's just in our service area and we're expecting it. And we join in with Transylvania and Haywood County, a little bit Henderson, I guess, a bunch of that along that part. And Skyland is one of our neighboring districts and we meet them more on the Parkway, they go through, we're close, but, uh, we gotta range them out. That, that, that is a concern of mine. Is there a potential plant if this event's gonna happen? Yeah. How am I gonna, how am I gonna keep doors open up on?
Well, you're gonna be on the door.
And we're, we're either about a penny away or something, getting maxed out, um, as far as fire help.
We are watching this bill's very closely and thinking about the impact on everybody.
And just one comment on that too, I mean, in parts, I've heard from, uh, from the, from Dr. Green and some of the folks who are watching this real carefully, but it sounds like the, um, it, a lot of the, at least some of this has sort of been slowed down, has been a direct result of, of firefighters and fire associations across the state specifically raising the concerns. And I think, you know, we've been, uh, we, we're concerned for other reasons as well. We are also raising those concerns, but I think the, I think the voice of firefighters has played a big part in that, at least slowing down, so continue to, uh, to speak up for sure. I think it's happened a positive effect.
Yeah, don't stop.
Thank you.
We, we plan on late fifth and sixth to have a discontention. Good, related to that. Y'all have, last year, I think it was twenty-two, three votes.
Yes, sir.
I'm White Rock, Gary Creek Fire Department. Uh, we're just a small, little department up in the woods. I'm, I guess I'm about the last chief that's come on board, uh, is hired. And we run, uh, two personnel during the day, all volunteer, nah, we don't have any twenty-four hour shifts. Far as any growth, we don't have that much growth coming on out there, so we're basically setting what we've got, so. So we're basically setting what we've got, so.
You.
I'm Richard Sale, Chief Rental Fire Department. And, uh, we probably have not the smallest, probably the second smallest district as far as geographic area is concerned. But we also, you know, we're almost around the city of Asheville, uh, to air east and west and south. And we run a good bit of automatic aid with them and also our neighboring departments. We run probably good to nine hundred calls this coming year. And I would say between the third and half of those would be automatic aid from each way to another, another department. We received a straight five classification two thousand and three as far as our eyes, they're ready to concern. And, uh, you know, we still work hard to keep, um, our training and our equipment and everything else up to date to continue to maintain that for our folks living in our district. I think air biggest, uh, you know, air, air goals right now will be able to add more personnel and equipment. Uh, Air First got engine, uh, turned twenty years old soon. And we're getting ready to, uh, work toward replacing that. And fire engine not cheap. I don't know if anybody said that, I'd figure here, talk in the room. But I would say three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars for, uh, a new, well, I'm giving the thumbs up. Folks that have just purchased or the process of purchasing, but, uh, and that's, that's some basic engine. That's not a lot of fancy bells and whistles and, you know, getting even into newer technology that's available out there for, uh, for us as firefighters to make our jobs better and easier. So that's required us. We, we've had to start putting back money, I think, three or four years ago, we started putting back money in our budgets to deal with the down payment. And, you know, if the truck will be financed, I think most folks in here do end up having to finance trucks. And we do receive, uh, a good rate with banks, uh, to do that. But, um, we have a full-time, uh, career firefighters and I have six part-time, uh, right now. We have two per shift that run for our shifts and we have two more that are money for Friday, myself and our vision chiefs to handle their crane and maintenance, uh, on air equipment. We have probably, um, ten to twelve very dedicated volunteers. It's kind of very baked, I've kind of heard that a common theme around the room as well. But we know we can count on, um, as far as that. And that's what has enabled us not have to increase our tax rate to put on, uh, more paid staff because we do have a decent response from, um, air, air volunteer staff. And to speak to the volunteer thing, uh, having grown up with, uh, a dad who was fire chief for forty years in air, uh, volunteer fire department until nineteen ninety-five, um, people used to work in their communities. And that's where your volunteer firefighters grateful to do and do that. People don't work in their community anymore. You know, many communities are now bedroom communities. You go hear a worker, even hear Randy, who they talk about that they've got guys that live out of state that come and work with their station people. In my community, you know, I've lived here all my life, so I've had land that's just been there. But for me to hire someone with the expectation to him to buy property in the rental community is not, is not really the cause of the values of homes that are, uh, that are there and even, even land. Air district is, uh, very diverse. We have very urban district with great fire hydrants and plenty of water to mount tops with no water and, you know, many and too many dollar homes that still deserve same protection that these guys have that have a fire hydrant in front yard. And to speak of that and the automatic aid that's, you know, given, that's kind of been talked about around the room too. It's been about, three years ago, uh, probably furthest house, worst case scenario we could have as far as, uh, structured fire is concerned, uh, caught on fire, first word home, you had alarm system. That's how the call came in was the alarm service. And because of the agreements we have with automatic aid and knowing where this place was, uh, we were able to bring enough water up there initially that we didn't have to bring. Once the tankers dumped their water and came back out, we didn't have to bring any more water back in to contain that fire. And, uh, he had, uh, some precedent damage to, to his home. So very, you know, fortunately we do have that and the work relationships we do amongst, um, departments that are here today. And we've got some that aren't represented here today as well that, uh, are not to be left out because we work, work well for everybody. Uh, another thing that we also have, you know, in air station, we have housed the county air truck, which belongs to Buncombe Firefighter Association. And it's been, gosh, ten years ago that we worked toward replacing the truck and the compressor and whatnot. The county did come in and help us with that and certainly it was a great need, it was met. And that truck responds all over the county. So we may be heading Barnfield, we may be headed to Upper Hominy, uh, we may be headed to Broad River. And what that truck does, it has a compressor on it that, uh, compresses the air till we refill, uh, air cell containing apparatus. So they're, basically they're air tanks we had to go into burning buildings with and had to be certified. And kept that with a guy that was just there doing the maintenance on that today. And, um, because we are associated with located, we can be on I forty and I two forty and be, you know, pretty much anywhere in the county without, um, a too, too lengthy amount of time. And just talking with Randy the other day, um, we ended up going automatic aid to them. Well, it wasn't automatic as usual aid, but you talked about changing stuff to automatic aid. Uh, part of their district even think, wow, from this side of the city, the other side. But because we can be on two forty and be there pretty quick, um, the response time, it, it works. So, uh, we, uh, towards top of our place, the engine, another thing would be, we would watch the very near future be able to add another person to our shift, so we put on three more career firefighters. And, uh, you know, we don't have to be plant that happen because unfortunately it is economically driven. And, um, our, you know, budget is probably close to a hundred thousand this upcoming for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen year. And right now with their eight, uh, full-time and their part-time guys, about half our budget is taken up in salaries and benefits. And then we still have to keep our equipment up. You know, we probably have less to pay the bills. Our station is, uh, twenty, yeah, twenty, twenty-two years old, we've been in it. And it's, we're getting ready to refuel the parking lot. That's not cheap. And, um, so we've got some things that we need to do there that is going to cost some, some dollars too as far as banks are building. But they're going to take some, some bigger dollars than the normal above, the freight maintenance and that kind of stuff. And I guess that's, that's about it. Proud, proud to be a part of this group. And the, of course, first reference, we already talked about that. We try to get out there quarterly on Saturday to do crane. And then we generally, about every eight weeks, go there on Tuesday night on their crane night to go. These are stuff, and that has just been a tremendous, tremendous help to the fire service and training and whatever we do. Of course, uh, we came to, you know, you folks with that need and y'all are able to pick up the ball and help us see that to fruition. So, uh, still can't talk about that enough. I think ten years ago, if we thought that was going to happen, we, we would never have thought that journey would ever came through for us as far as having that kind of facility here in the air camp. Very appreciative of what, what happens.
If I might, could I, I'll give you one example of how the mutual aid, automatic aid work. We had probably the largest single loss in any one structure we've ever had. Million high dollar loss on, uh, we flooded twenty thousand gallons of water that night. And we never had to wait for water. We've got to make sure it's too, it was there, way up on the mountain.
My name's Josh Howard, I'm the Assistant Chief at Inca Fire Department. Work for Chief Bettyfield. Just to add real quick to what the Chief Bettyfield said, of course, you know, firefighter safety is our biggest concern, um, our community service. One thing that would really be helpful for us is water out in our western district. I know that is affecting our ISO rating and was the one thing that, that, that holds us back from wanting to go. So that would definitely be, uh, definitely help us out in that area as well.
We've, we've talked about that before. And so by water, you mean the water pressure out of the, for the commissioners?
Water and all of that.
Well, I think specifically we talked about, like the down, what do you call it? The down line pressure? Were you, I think, do you remember what we would?
Yeah, but also even extending that water, watering all the way out to the county line. We got several, we have several structures, large facilities, truck stop, uh, wing foot, you know, tire, tire facilities, heavy fire load. We have a motel right there next to thirty-seven. And, you know, we, we know there's a couple of large tracts of property that are for sale just in the Haywood. So, you know, we see the possibility of a lot of growth.
But don't the hotel out there, thirty-seven, do they have some kind of city water, is it Canton or who?
Uh, I don't believe it does.
I mean, they're in water to where supposedly that road there, there's water running from Canton to where basically they're talking about putting a racetrack on it, the, the two lane. That's not that much further up that way.
I think they're about two miles from the county line, mile and a half, few miles.
But it's not far from there.
That would, that would definitely be a big help for us. And I know that's, that's, that would definitely help, help our, our.
I'm Rob Townley, I'm County Ranger with the North Carolina Forest Service here. As you guys probably know, our situation's a little bit different for you fire departments. But Buncombe County still does fund forty percent of our budget. Now, that forty percent, you know, just what it gets you guys, uh, full-time in the county, it's just myself plus, uh, one other permanent employee and one temporary. Outside of that, we have access to quite a few more resources, whether it be aircraft, um, the bridge program, bulldozers, any kind of fire control apparatus, stuff like that. Plus, as y'all saw in Ridge Crest, we have access to incident management teams. And, you know, we first start pulling from around the district and then work to the region. And then when that supply of resources is exhausted, we start going across the state. And that's kind of what happened at Ridge Crest. We pulled in folks from all the way down on the coast, whether it be Wilmington, I mean, from across the statewide, we totally had response for that fire. You know, one of the biggest things is, for you guys to know, is just that response is at no cost to the county. You guys fund their forty percent, that's it. Total cost, I want to say for that fire was about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is what we tracked it at. Not a dime of that goes back to Buncombe County. So, um, as far as issues go, you know, stuff that I can address with you guys, I don't have it. My issues typically go to the state. You know, that's, uh, where we run into stuff is we're losing manpower statewide, whether it be out of our district office or regional office. You know, they're cutting positions here and there, but I address that in the other, other direction. You know, outside of that, I, once again, just have to echo what you just said. These guys and their response to that Ridge Crest fire allowed us to pretty much go and, and be more offensive on the actual woods fire itself. Stopping that, that fire at seven hundred and forty acres was a, you know, pretty big feat. You know, we were looking out, uh, you know, two or three days out in advance of that fire and expecting it to go to about two thousand acres. So, you know, their response allowed us to turn around and focus on woods and, and really hit it hard and, and take care of it. So.
Media, media.
But, yeah, I'll leave that, you know, I just, you know, I, my main reason for coming out here is to, you know, touch base with you guys and see if we're doing enough, you know, you know, for you guys, so.
Everybody's good cooperation vocalizes here?
Absolutely.
Felt that you were going to comment.
I don't know if you've seen the picture, but there was a, um, chief Ratcliffe was out at, uh, Torren Town Baptist Sunday night. They presented some of the West Buncombe people with a cert, certificate of appreciation. And they had a picture that was taken of that fire where Ridge Crest, you should cross with the fire and you see this. Somebody got an incredible picture of that. I don't know if you've seen it, but if you, if you haven't, I'm going to try to get a copy. You try to get it, see if I can get my hands on a copy of that chief, and maybe we can share with the, the others.
Yeah, what was it, plastered?
We probably get, Tom probably took that picture. Remind that, because it's amazing, it was amazing feat and amazing, uh, amazing place to protect. Absolutely so grateful that it was protected.
Good afternoon, I'm Chris Bezinski, I'm the Deputy Chief of the Asheville Fire Department. And I appreciate you having us over today. I'm kind of like Rob, but if any of the issues we have, we typically address through council, but I appreciate. We do have a, uh, we do cover, uh, we have a Asheville suburban fire district, which includes Bittmore State and the, uh, part of the Hall Creek area, um, and, uh, east at east, east of town. But I, I'd kind of like to talk, give you a little bit of, about us. We're, we're twelve fire stations, we have sixteen fire companies on duty every day, uh, twenty-four hours a day. And we have one daytime fire company. And even with that many folks working every day, it's still, I think it speaks to what everybody else has said. We can't do it alone. So it's, it's really important for us to build those relationships, um, and continue to improve our relationships with our, our partners in this room to make sure that when we do have those busy days, bad days, uh, big fires, whatever confronts us on a daily basis, that we're able to call in and get great help from our neighbors. And we're happy to be able to provide that, you know, back to them as well. The other, one big thing I like to talk about at the training center, I really can't speak enough about how much that has changed our fire department. It's really helped us to pick up our game, so to speak, because we have a, an amazing facility that we can really push ourselves harder than we have been able to before to, uh, get better. And I appreciate.
Burning that one house down all the time.
It's a pretty, that's a pretty good picture.
Y'all utilize. Yes, sir. We, currently we have nineteen new recruits that are out there for the next twenty-two weeks. Till the end of, uh, till the end of August. They're going to try to burn it down, but I don't think that's sensible.
Don't burn it down, I was about to replace that.
But thanks for y'all's leadership, making it happen. Because it is a huge value to the county.
Good, you're getting your time in.
Oh, for sure.
I got to ask that over here.
Thanks, Nick, for your time.
Uh, my name's Barry Hendren, I'm the Assistant Fire Chief of Asheville. And as the former training chief, let me say that, uh, that, that training center is, is a phenomenal resource for this, this community. And not only for, for just Buncombe County, but, uh, we've, we've had the good fortune of showing it to, to folks from all over the southeast and lots and lots of envy, uh, when we, we get to show them what, what we have access to. And, uh, it, it, it really is, uh, having spent several years scrounging and looking for places to, to train and can we find a building that we can go do this or go do that? And, um, I know our risk manager is happier that we're not tearing up buildings. Uh, so it, it, it really has been a phenomenal, uh, opportunity for, for us to push our folks. And, and, and as Chief Bezinski said, it's, uh, it's changed, it's changed the culture in a lot of ways for our department. We've got guys that say, my job is to train, to be ready to, to go, to go out. You know, their training is my, my job. I'm, I'm always preparing to get better. And, uh, we, we can't, uh, can't say how much we appreciate the, the counties, uh, you know, stepping up and, and doing that for, for this, this community.
Well, your professionals deserve professional facility. And I was feeling a little bored, it wasn't a close call, we did it, so we're glad you were.
Steve, can I throw out a few numbers?
Yes, sir.
Nineteen eighty, a fire helmet costs seventy-five bucks, it's four hundred and fifty down. A firefighter that starts out, um, at twenty-seven thousand, costs us forty thousand dollars in benefits. Instead of turnout gear was two hundred and fifty dollars. It's almost twenty-eight hundred dollars now. An air pack that costs seven hundred and fifty dollars, costs seventy-five hundred dollars now. So you see what we're up against is the price increases. Richard said a truck is half a million dollars, half a million at the minimum. A ladder truck's well over a million dollars, uh, when, when you buy those things. So, so each one of us here have that difficulties of seeing those out of those prices. And that's what we're dealing with, basically. Each one of the guys are taking care of their budgets and doing what they do best, just to take care of their community.
Well, to, to add on to that, um, my ex-fun law, who is still my son law, he's a fire marshal for the city. And what I learned from him, and then being around all of you, there is not a thought of to do this, maybe get a second job. He had, he moved out to Kandlar. But my point is, you all and all the other firefighters, without batting an eyelash, take, start off with these salaries that most people would never consider. You're doing these Herculean tests. Housing isn't available. Housing isn't available, but you still do it. And to me, the inequity is horrible. Absolutely horrible, not fair, and I don't know who can advocate for this to be changed somewhat, whether housing can come down, salaries can go up, but you all do this, you never mention it, you just do it second jobs or second nature, and the sacrifice, I think, and I'm not saying this to be self-effacing, I just don't think it's fair.
I could throw out one more thing, too. I know benefits have been mentioned a little bit around the year, and we ran around it probably about ten, twelve years ago, to see if we could either piggyback with county or put together some type of group called, I mean, Firefighters Association to do benefits. And that's not a lot of ventures, guys. They don't want to allow that to take place. You have to be your own entity, and we're all, you know, a private nonprofit corporation, if you will, so we're all considered our own entity, therefore we can't group, band together for those kind of benefits. And I had one of my firefighters, luckily for him, that's changed now, because his wife now has a job that she had benefits at, but before she was a job, she had benefits, she has a disease that required her to be on someone's group policy, she could not get her own private individual policy. And between her and his two kids, he was out of pocket about twelve thousand dollars a year to provide, you know, health benefits for his wife and his two kids. And that's crippling. And, you know, that's something that, we're not going to fix in this room, but, you know, that's something that's hard for all of us.
And they're a part of that, it's never going to change.
No. Yeah, well, just along that line, Chief, we do have, in Buncombe County, everybody in Buncombe County is entitled to have free primary care, which is Western Carolina Community Health down the road. We've had that for twenty years.
They've been around that long, but we used to do it at Health Bar.
Yeah, Health Bar used to do it, but we contracted with them. So, we do have a floor, this is long before the Affordable Care Obamacare thing, we've had it here a long time. And one reason we have it, because we know that it costs too much to live here, we're working on that, we're trying to, I think our strategy is to try to increase the number of good jobs. We've added six thousand, pretty high-paying jobs, about a billion dollars the last five years of investment. So, we're trying to raise all the boats up, but it's, there's just such a gap here, you know this better than anybody, between what salaries are and what housing costs are, because we have so many people that want to live here. So, you know, that's always been our strategy. We're going to, but, you know, we'll look at, if you have specific things, we'll look at it, you know, we talked about doing something for teachers at one point, building some, I think the teachers, building some affordable housing, you know, I hate to use affordable housing, because it sounds like you're on the sidewalk with a tin cup or something, but workforce housing is probably better work. But, you know, it's a big problem, we're aware of it, we do put a lot of money into it every year, it's just, it's just like, sometimes it's like you're just sitting in the ocean though, because it is, we really are expensive places to live. We're working on it both sides, raise the salaries up everywhere and try to get some more stock for people that have places they need to live, because we don't want you to have to live out of town, out of county, other states. We want you to live right here in Buncombe County, where you can be part of the community.
I was going to raise one question, if we go back to West Buncombe, we've talked about fire districts versus fire service districts, and our attorney and Jerry Beahan, I was after him, figuring, trying to figure out, how do we structure that, so, and what needs to happen within each fire district, so that we can tax it as a service district, which is more advantageous to you overall? And we are continuing to work on that, trying to get that worked out for you, and like yours has the same boundary, but the service district does something different than fire district. So, how do we collapse that so that we can meet your need? But those, we'll be talking to you individually on those, to just try to get it to a point where those of you who are bumping up against your limits and have real need, we're able to help you with that structure. But it does require some action by your board, and we can't totally undo what the voters did with the fire districts some forty, fifty years ago. There is an option to abandon that and become a fire service district, that's what we're working on, how to do that.
So, about two years ago, Hollifield, I can't remember what his first name is, fire marshal in Rutherford County, Roger Hollifield, got in Rutherford County there, he gave me a lot of the information, they've done the same thing down there. We first discussed this almost two years ago, and I sent all that stuff to Michael as a model to look at and see whether there's something that could be done up here.
And we do think it can be done, but what we did was take the avenues that we could get it adjusted through the piece of legislation, and that just got, it kind of took on a life of its own and was defeated for other reasons. It just didn't move forward. So, we do recognize the need, and we're trying to figure out how, where the boundaries are and what the service district was established to do versus what the fire district was established to do, and then how we bring that all together under a service district. I don't want anybody to think we're dropping the ball on that, we're just trying to make it stand for time when we make those changes. And figure out who's got to, it'll take some more action to do that, it'll take some action on your boards, too.
I can just talk about what Richard was talking about, the insurance, and all their prior, I've got a, I've got a full-time employee, been employed for about ten years now, just recently, in the last couple of years, diagnosed with a disease that will eventually take his career. He will get to the point where he will not be able to work anymore. He has two small kids, his wife is a teacher, and our insurance cost, based on his diagnosis, is starting to creep up. We're in our last year of grace from the Obamacare stuff. Next year, our agent told us that if the Supreme Court does not rule in the appropriate manner, it would be almost catastrophic to us. And we're talking, he said, yes, in forty percent increase. So, you know, that is a big chunk of change to us, as far as that goes. You know, we answer, again, like I say, we're projecting about twenty-eight hundred calls this year. But our calls and the guys in the room can attest to this, whenever we get calls, we get called, and a call, and a call, and a call. We had five calls within thirty minutes of each other one morning. And it's not uncommon to do that. I run a staff, again, on the shift, I've got five people, if I'm fully staffed, twenty-four. We use a part-time person to fill that fifth slot, I've got four full-timers, there's two of us, myself, administrative assistant, who takes care of all the paperwork as far as bills and all the other stuff during the daytime. So, it stresses us to the max sometimes, where we have to call Chris's folks, Ted's folks, you know. Really, our goal is this, you know, this budget year to bring on a sixth person to backfill with part-time folks, because the cost of insurance and everything else is, it's easier to fill with part-time. But then, people like Jim out here are paying way too much on part-time, so we're losing, we're losing our time.
Or I can get twelve people.
We're losing our part-timers to Jim.
My opinion, Andrew Freakspeak was the most important, just my opinion.
To echo that, I've seen Archie have to tell people, I'm sorry, you know, if you can't promise me working so many hours a month, part-time, then I'm not going to be able to use you, because after I pay this insurance and that insurance on you, I quit you and everything else, I can't, you know, have more for you to come in here and work twenty-four hours, I have just a couple shifts a month, you know, people have to. So, and that, that's kind of a bad situation, when you have so many more.
David Van May, I know these guys need to sit here and listen to these talk all night, because we're very passionate about our job. So, I know it's getting laid out, but let me give you one quick history of this, Fire Chiefs Association sitting in the room. We're pretty strong in this county now, because we can pick up the phone and call each other, but three or four of us in the room begin a monthly meeting somewhere, we decide just eat, tell lies and everything else that we had to do. And so, we went two counties over to the Cajun Pig in Timbuk Rock, and the next day it burnt down.
That's not good.
So, we decided we better form a group before we get in trouble with them. But that's what we're about, we're about a group, and we're about professionals, and how we do our jobs in our community, and these guys are something else to be a part of.
We're very fortunate, and I think everybody knows that, we really, just the way you deal with each other, you work together, you put out fires, a couple of you helped me out personally from down to here in Langley, and y'all have been one, and we appreciate that. We appreciate it.
We do, and for everybody on our end products, we usually do first responders call, every effort. Every beat, they went, just after loading, what, two hundred or something like that? So, we're going back and drawing it up.
Mr. Chairman, I could say something, one thing I was hearing, and I think I'm hearing it right, which is, which is positive news to me, is I've heard that many of you have an anticipate, you have a need, or will have a need, or you could meet a need if you had a full-time person, or you had someone that you could add at that level. But I'm also hearing that there's twenty-year, thirty-year volunteers, there's some part-time people out there now that are taking their continually, that are doing their training, that are trained up. So, should that opportunity arise to be able to put those people on, it sounds like we have trained people, we're not going to have to go out there and beat the bushes trying to find folks and get them trained up and ready to go. And to me, that's a testament to everybody in this room, to the talent and the foresight of keeping those people. And the reason people do this, you know, you talk about the people doing it so long in Barnsville, it's part of their life. They're not going to do anything else. They're going to be, you know, firefighters, that's what they're going to do, you know, some of them's generations. And, but, at the time when, you know, we have to meet that need, it sounds like we're going to have people to be able to fill those slots, and that's it.
It goes back to a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to go out and think and donate a little bit to the firm in there in Black Mountain, but then I had the opportunity to go out and think, everybody was out at Ridgecrest, a lot of people, Mr. Beahan had this group back there, said he had the trailer out there, he was talking to the federal people. And I left there and I said, guys, we're in good hands, you know, it's, they're going to get this deal knocked down, because they had it drawn, and I think it jumped the line, and then they cut another road in, and then that pretty well saved Montreat. You guys do a fabulous job of it. I walked away thinking, they're working with the forest rangers, and everybody's working together, and I think the forest rangers, they was bringing like fifty-four more in from other areas that evening, and a lot of these guys have been there since six o'clock the morning before, you know. So, what else can you do but thank people, appreciate what's being done. So, thank you, guys, that's all I can say.
We do appreciate it. Any other comments or good advice? Just, I really appreciate you taking the time to see us, this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you, so much.
Thank you. Thank you for this, everyone.